You just love it.
It'll change tomorrow.
Apparently it's gonna. So, uh, let's, um, we don't typically do this for work sessions, but let's stand up and pledge the flag.
Stand in charge.
Because I want to.
How's that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now feel that.
Shouldn't y'all play ball or something?
Well, if not in this weather.
Although a good football rugby game would be fantastic.
It would be fun.
Football.
What do you think Weaver?
We're too old for that.
The basketball thing never.
I know. We had the best.
Still up for that. Yeah, okay. All right, so, uh, we're back in the, in the, what seems to be the continuing saga of comprehensive zoning.
Yes.
And we're making progress. I don't want it to sound negative, we are, and I appreciate all the work that you've done, Linda, everybody that's done in your department. So, uh, this is very important and it's a big step for our county, so I'm gonna hand it over to you as we, uh, kinda go over what we've done before, and I know you've got an agenda here, so.
Yes.
Director of Planning.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much. So, um, because of the weather, we've had some delays with our, with our meetings, um, so we're back on track again now, and, um, in your packet is just kind of an outline for items for discussion for today. As you can see, we're kinda getting toward the end here, um, we're gonna pick up with bulk requirements, and depending how quickly we get through that and some follow-up items, um, at that point in time, you would've reviewed at least the, the, all of the text, everything that we proposed, you would've reviewed. Um, so today, we're hoping to get through the, um, commercial industrial employment campus, um, maps and statistics, which we've prepared for you, just so you can see again, um, the number of parcels, the total acreages, the minimum acreage, maximum, the average acreage, and we also printed out a big poster map, so you can see the areas of the county that this would be applied to. Um, and that shows you, um, where the properties would have the potential to be rezoned, C1, C2, C3, Employment Campus I1 and I2. So that's a combination, that's the land use and what's on the ground today zoning-wise, so, um, that's also this 11 by 17 map in front of you. Um, also, we included the notes from our January 22nd meeting, which was the last time that we met. Um, all of the notes are being posted on our comprehensive planning, um, our comprehensive rezoning website, so that way the, um, citizens can follow around, follow this. We also have the medical cannabis discussion for you today, um, an update on the hospital and where we stand with them, and I think that's it to catch everyone up. Um, did you wanna take a minute to read the notes over? Does everyone recall where we were from the last meeting and what we went over? So just a, I guess, a quick recap from our last meeting on January, um, 15th, um, we talked about, uh, non-conforming uses, um, and what that would mean. We talked about all the, um, outstanding issues that we had addressed from the prior meeting, um, we talked about the golf courses and the resort definition and, um, what would be permitted with, as far as golf course goes in the employment campus, um, to try to address resorts. Um, we talked about, uh, not having any differentiation between hotel motel, uh, we addressed adult entertainment at last time's meeting, um, and we still had an outstanding issue with, um, a list of the medical dental and medical cannabis, which we can talk about with regards to the map. Um, we began our discussion on, um, with residential uses last time in the commercial industrial employment campus, and you all decided to go back and allow the retirement age restricted, um, into the C1, C2 and employment campus. Um, they are currently allowed both in BNR and BG, but this was different than the recommendations on Planning Commission, and at the end of our conversation, um, we ended on page 48. We're gonna pick up today with page 49, bulk requirements. So, to go back to the C1, um, discussion about where there was, I guess, medical offices within the C1, we did find a few. So, um, actually, one of, um, is in, in your example that we have prepared today for our discussion on bulk requirements, but, um, there was one in, uh, North Carroll in the Melrose area that happened to be a physical therapist that was in a C1 district, um, a chiropractor off of 97, so, um, so right here on 97, it's kind of this weird area by the, where the advanced auto is, the five below that shopping center, there's this like, kinda bizarre road that's a strip behind it, that's actually in the county. Uh, there, there was some medical office, um, in that area, chiropractor, um, uh, off of Maryland 26 and Fallon at Nell's Acres, there what, there's a medical office complex there that would be in C1, and then Maryland 26, um, Old Liberty Road, there's an orthodontist, and, um, they're all in C1. And actually, that's what it is, C1 examples. I prepared a list of pictures and maps just to give you an example of each of the different, um, districts of what some of the uses and what they would look like. So does that help answer your question or, or confuse the situation more, 'cause you were curious about how they would maybe have conflict with the?
Yeah, I think we just wanted a, a list of examples.
Yes.
So that we could kinda put the face to the name type thing.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yes, absolutely.
So, um, I guess that answers. Guys.
So there's not many.
Right, and they were, I can't remember the exact concern, that, they weren't gonna become non-conforming, right? 'Cause they would go to, into C1.
Correct. I think it was the order of magnitude of where they were located, were they in the middle of a neighborhood, and then how much traffic would that really generate? And the way these are all situated is, they're kind of on the outskirts of neighborhoods, they're smaller parcels, um, that would serve the community, but when we looked, when I looked at all of them, they all made good sense, like, you know, you kinda know it when you see it, and so when I was going through each of the C1, um, they all, it, it, they looked appropriate in where they were located currently. And then, again, look at the map, because this is, you know, all of the latest colored pink is where they can occur in the future, and that's also on your map here, so.
Pink, not pink.
Uh, the late, this latest.
That's, I guess, the light purple.
Yeah.
Color, whatever you wanna call that.
White, salmon.
Salmon.
There you go.
We need Vanna White.
Yes. I'll bring my pointer. Mary, you might be Vanna.
Yeah, I think the question that came up is, as it pertains to the traffic and, uh, you know, there's challenges when it, when you're in the residential area, that's why we wanted.
The concern of having them in C1.
Right.
Okay.
Right, yeah, that's what it was.
Rather than the concern that they wouldn't be.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
And again, given how much C1 we have, it's very limited, um, there's 318 parcels at 208 acres, um, and a lot of that too is in our rural villages as well, where there's, they're really not fully developed, um, but you know, could have the potential in the future to be developed, and the maximum size acreage of one of those is six acres. So they're very, you know, very small, and not very many in the county, relatively speaking. Um, and then there's over 660 C2 properties, over a thousand acres of those, um, with the largest acreage being 56 acres.
The map, the map you gave us last week, was C1?
Yeah, that was just the C1.
That does not match this. So I'm kinda getting confused on.
Um, he just didn't have it circled out.
What's that?
He had the circles here because the C1 is so small, they are on this map, they're just so small. And in a different color.
Yes, in color.
He, he made it really stand out because they were on their own.
The, um, 26 all the way to the east.
By the reservoir.
Yeah, big circle. What, and, I mean, are we talking those very two small?
Yes.
Very small parcels?
Yes.
Next to the word 20, next to the number 26.
Yeah, I guess. I don't know, 'cause I can't see it on here.
Yeah, I know. He, it's because it's just, it is so small.
They're such small properties.
Yeah, they're very tiny.
And that's why he did the circles when he did just C1.
Because else they wouldn't stand out at all.
That's true. Yeah, um.
Your minimum acreage on that is two one-hundredths of an acre?
It might just be a sliver of a, like, a partial piece of property or just a GIS.
Or a rate of wage.
Then your minimum acres on C2 is two, is one one-thousandth of an acre?
Mm-hmm.
Which is like, how big is that? Like a square foot?
Yeah.
A postcard.
Forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square feet in an acre.
Just reporting it.
Yeah.
Thanks for that, but, like, what can you put on that?
Again, it just might be a.
It's an emergency alert going out on your phones.
Somebody's phone is.
I don't think you have a choice to start.
Okay, not mine. But.
Um, so, they're all, they are all, whatever is on this map, I assure you is on this map, they're just so small, and he, uh, the G I, GIS made it stand out more when they were just single, so you could see where the C1 was. I guess more just to illustrate, not to really be exact, just to kinda say, here's where things are.
See, I don't like the color of the map, the C1, 'cause for me, it's really hard to see that.
Too hard to see.
It's kinda close to C2.
Yeah, I'm getting confused also, because, again, um, this map, the one you gave us, is showing C1 next to 26 and 97, but on this map, it's not circled that way, so it's not even showing.
C1, 26.
Well, I think that's C1, right there. Right on the south side of, uh, 26.
Oh. To tell the color thing.
Yeah, I can't, yeah.
It's hard to tell the color.
Maybe it's just.
Maybe you can see on the bigger map, Mary.
Yeah, I guess, I think this was just.
It's just, um, east of 97, is that what you're considering, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right there, south of 26.
And east of 97.
Looks like it's C1.
No further. It's C2.
C2.
Okay, 'cause that, that's not matching this.
There's C2 there.
It's just, that color is just impossible.
It's just, it's just, again, I apologize. And we can, this is gonna be interactive, and we have it that way to make it easier to see, we know these are small, it was meant just to be kinda illustrative of how much we really have. That's C2.
That's one big, big circle.
The point was more just to show you kind of the distribution of where these things are, um, they tend to be kind of clustered together, the industrials and the commercials, they're near our towns, not a lot out in the, you know, in-between area.
In our major corridors.
Right. Exactly. I apologize, that was more the point of the map than being super specific, um, as to where things are. But again, so when this does go to the public, we have this interactively, so people could type an address in and see what they are.
I just suggest changing the colors, 'cause it is difficult to see on this.
You know, and, and I'll say this, what looks like on screen, and then depending on what printer you print it out, and even a change.
Yeah.
Because I know that he used the same color scheme for both, obviously that's easier, so it just really depends on what in cartridges, picking it up frankly.
And if we go to yellows, typically those are the residential from the plans, so I think you didn't wanna go to a whole new color scheme that's different.
Yeah, so we'll continue to work on making it so it's easier to, to see.
Divide it up into a few sectors. Yeah, brackets.
Mm-hmm.
We're not the brightest bunch anyway.
No, and, and sometimes, you know, someone, someone's doing mapping, they think it, it translates well, and then when someone else with a fresh eye is looking at it, it doesn't translate as well, so we understand, we'll, we'll work on making that better.
Should we have a, 5,600 acres for zoning in this area?
Of the commercial industrial employment campus?
Be about, I was just wondering, you know, how much.
Can't believe it works.
Fifty-seven, yeah. Fifty-seven hundred acres.
That, that would be eventually rezoned, right? So this is just the, right. All right, so that was just an example, so then I think, uh, Mary also prepared, um, a briefing on medical cannabis.
Okay, um, we sent this out a couple weeks ago, but we've got another one in front of you, it's the same. Basically, you had just asked for, you know, what had happened several years ago here regarding medical cannabis, particularly the dispensaries, and so this is just several pages, it gives what definitions were adopted, they reflected, that's on page one of this handout. It reflected the state definitions, the grower, dispensary, the processor, what medical cannabis itself is, and then, um, particular requirements regarding medical cannabis is on the bottom of page one, and then, um, in the IR and IG, all three uses are principal permitted uses. And on the third page, you can see the process that, um, the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners went through in developing this. Basically, the Planning Commission held five work sessions, one of them was a joint work session with the board to get their input, that occurred between, um, December of 2015 and June of 2016, um, and then the board considered, over the summer, changed the recommendation of the Planning Commission somewhat and adopted it on, um, September 15th of 2016. So it was basically a year-long process from when staff started working on it. Um, again, the Planning Commission had something a little bit more restrictive than what the Board of Commissioners, um, eventually adopted. On page four, you can see, this was pulled off the state website, where the licensed growers, licensed processors and dispensaries currently are. There is one that is set to open in Westminster in the next few months.
One what?
Just, I'm sorry, dispensary. Within the town, they're giving their final overlay district.
Say it's in the city, right?
Yes, yes, so they're working through their process of the overlay district.
So we don't have any growers or, uh, processors?
Yes, you do have one grower and one processor, and as I recall, it's the same, um, I believe that one's in Tawny.
That's in Tawny. Okay, uh, but you're not up and running, 'cause it's not on this map yet.
I'm sorry, the map is just the dispensaries.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it says at the top, like I said, all three.
No, I was looking, I was talking about on page four where I have broken them out. So no, it is not, the, the dispensary that will open is not.
Yeah, I thought it was, that's why I didn't say you could go map them anyway. All right.
And then on page five, I just provided for you some of the state regulations regarding, um, medical cannabis, and this was a lot of discussion that the Planning Commission had on how there are state regulations in place that provide additional protections in addition to the zoning protections in, um, chapter 158, fencing gates, video surveillance, security lighting, restrictions on visitors, um, especially for the dispensaries, there's separate public and operation zones, um, the secure wall to store the inventory is constructed of concrete, not next to an exterior wall with only one entrance. The secure wall to store the inventory is constructed of concrete, not next to an exterior wall with only one entrance. And it has to meet commercial security standards. So it's, this is just showing there's state regulations in place for the dispensaries. If you're interested in looking at the dispensaries. And, um, the information that was provided on the state website was that in the first, uh, year of sales, the number of registered cannabis patients increased from 20,000 to 75,000 patients with an additional 250 to 300 per day applying to be licensed. And in the first 12 months, $96 million was generated among the licensed retailers, which was more than double the anticipated.
Is this, uh, in Maryland?
It's just in Maryland, yes. So it started in December of 2017, and this was 2018. So that's just, um, you just had asked for more information regarding.
So currently, um, growing, uh, processing, dispensing are allowed where in Pearl County?
In the IR and IG, the light industrial, and they have the industrial.
For growing and processing, but not for dispensing?
Also for dispensing.
Dispensing is I2, right?
And I.
IR. Oh, um, oh, you're talking under the, um, not existing.
Um, the new table, we had also said that that was an error, that it should also be under I1, so that we would not be making it more restrictive. So I1 and I2.
And then the towns have their own. So the towns have adopted their own ordinances for how they're applying medical cannabis.
Don't want to get too much into that. It's, the discussion, are we having, um, what are the best practices on where to allow this? And are we trying to be more restrictive? I mean, what? I'm trying to remember parts of this conversation we've had over the last few weeks.
Well, I have, one of the things I brought up is dispensing, my opinion should be where any, where you have, where allowed pharmacy, you should allow this as well.
Right.
And that would be in commercial.
That's where, that's where we went then because that's when we decided to try to get, see where some of these pharmacies, or if there were pharmacies in any residential districts.
And C1, there are no pharmacies in C1.
Okay.
So the dispensing that's occurring across the state, which I appreciate your choice. Are they zoned in C1, C2 dispensing?
Well, all the, um, zoning districts aren't really comparable, but yes, they are in commercial shopping centers. They are standalone commercial properties. The ones that we found, we could not find another jurisdiction that limited them to strictly industrial. The other jurisdictions are allowing them in the commercial districts. I don't know about the C1, like they're very neighborhood one. But definitely they are allowing them in the commercial districts. And that's where you'll see them if you drive into Frederick County, there's a few. I was in Salisbury, there was one across from the restaurant I was eating at. Just commercial.
So was it your intent to change it?
Well, I would.
Dennis, or what?
I would think it should be, uh, allowed in the C2 and C3. It's a dispensary, but yeah, I think it should be in C3. Because it is, according to law, it's a medical reason to have it. It's the same as any other pharmaceutical. You might have to do for whatever, you might have to use for whatever ailment you have.
Right.
If it's prescribed by a doctor and it's for medical uses, I'd see how we should keep it out of C1 or C2. I mean, sorry, C2, C3.
So refresh my memory, Senator Mary, what was the thinking behind just allowing it in C1?
No.
I mean, I want an I2. I want an I2, I'm sorry.
Just to be consistent with what the Board of Commissioners did two years ago, we tried not to...
Correct, we didn't want to rehash it.
Yeah, okay.
Particularly, that's when we were actually working on it.
More conservative, with probably, I would imagine, the intent of being more conservative, therefore being more restrictive. I agree with Mr. Fraser that we should not be more restrictive to what's already in place. And medical cannabis is being used very differently. I mean, we've grown now to a, to its usage for legitimate, appropriate, regulated, you know, procedures. I mean, that's just the reality of it. I mean, it, it's hard to make that culture change from there we were to where we are, but that's just the reality. So I, I agree with you, uh, that it should be dispensed where other medicines are dispensed.
Are there any pharmacies in I1 or I2? There probably are, they're probably on C districts, right?
I, I, without checking, I couldn't say a hundred percent for certainty.
Definitely not I2, but...
Yeah.
I'll put Mayan in the city court.
Just, yeah.
No, I'm thinking in R.
Yeah, because my feeling would be, instead of putting it in I1 and I2, just put it in C2 and C3 and take it out of industrial anything altogether. Because I think it belongs to commercial, not industrial.
Is that industrial?
I can't think of any that stand out.
They were originally.
Yeah, they were.
What about in the Mariposas? Is there any, like, small neighbor care type of thing?
Not that I can, no. Think of it in that area, no.
There's a pharmacy in the Safeway, because there's probably one in Martins.
CVS or...
CVS on tour. All that was industrial, but they've all been...
They're all business now.
Yeah, they've all been, yeah.
There's nothing over in Mariposa.
Well, as long as they jump through the hoops, because the state regulations are incredible. And I can tell you, after touring the facility, that's not dispensing, but it's growing and processing, but after touring that, those folks up there went above and beyond the state regulations, which I would hope most would do, or make sure they are meeting to nth degree when it comes to that. So I would, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. I don't, I, I think, I think, uh, as you hit on, on the, on why we decided to do what we did, when we did it, it was just all so new. And we just, we didn't know where to go. So now I think we have a little bit more of a, of a chance to see where it's, where it is and where it is in other jurisdictions, so. I mean, I, I hate to do, I hate to say that, but there's one in Hanover and it's in, it's kind of in a residential district up there. You all have probably seen that one. I mean, it's an old restaurant that they turned into a dispensary, but I don't, man, I don't know what the zoning is up there and I don't care. But my point is, it's surrounded by residential.
Right.
Right.
But I would think that, you know, I don't know what the hoops are that they have to jump through. Until that dispensary challenges the regulations, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But I'm sure there's one out there that's gonna...
I really appreciate the idea.
You know what I mean? That they're not gonna want to, they're not gonna want to put the thickness of the wall or they're not gonna... You know what I mean? Anyone out there is gonna say, I don't want to do that. That's fine.
A lot of state regulations on security look like they're meeting a lot of our concerns. Does anyone know if there's been any criminal activity of any of the existing facilities we have, like anyone trying to break into them?
I haven't heard of anything.
But that's good.
Well, we don't have any.
Well, I thought they were getting ready to be set up or something, or...
Well, the one in Tawney, I've never heard of.
We just have to warn them.
All right.
The 97 is not...
I think the one in Tawney Town, if you set foot on the property, there's like 15 guys jumping out of a...
And that's good.
Unbelievable.
It really is.
It's a big investment.
Yeah.
Well, I think that addresses a concern a lot of us have through our constituents, is any criminal element that comes into the community over this.
Well, I, again, again, I appreciate the work you've done. You, you really laid good foundation, understanding how the state is recognizing growing, processing and distribution, distribution of medical cannabis. I think the, the concern, again, I'm speculating, is that it was a conservative approach on how we want to be restricted. Uh, not necessarily about the criminal activity, but more just the, the cultural, you know, perception. I think we have recognized the, the maturity of where medical cannabis is being used and how it's being distributed for all the right reasons, that we should allow it to be distributed to those that can use it and make it as available for them as possible. Uh, so, like you said, putting into the C1, C2. C2, C3, excuse me, makes, makes sense, I mean...
So would you suggest then to take the next step, take it out of I1?
I would, yes. I1 and I2. Because why would it be industrial?
Or at least give them the option, why take it out?
Well, it could be in a park, like an industrial park where we do allow some retail, so you may want to...
Right, it could be what they call vertically into...
They can dispense.
Maybe that would be, that would be, by zoning terms, accessory use anyway.
Accessory use.
So that would be allowed anyway, wouldn't it?
The pharmacy idea is accessible.
I would prefer if we just say we're gonna allow, allow, just allow it there. And that way it's clear, there's no question about it.
And there's interpretation saying, is it accessory or not? How do we...
Just leave it.
But also recognizing from the very beginning conversations we had about what is the best use of these zones? And is the best use of I1, I2 to allow for medical cannabis distribution? I mean, that's, you, you educate us on this from day one, so I'm trying to keep to that theme. What is the best use for industrial zoning? And if it's not pharmacies, you know, then my recommendation is let's do what we think where the pharmacies are, and that's C2, C3, and leave it at that.
Well, I guess it goes...
One of the ideas originally in the I1 and I2, since that's where they were growing, processing, it, it would be easier for the dispensing to be all together. They wouldn't have to worry about other problems. Transportation to a business location or something. We did discuss some of that back when we were originally looked into it. Whether it's, it's in or out of them, it doesn't bother me either way.
Yeah.
But that was just one of the things, if they were already there...
Can we crash it to say it has to be in conjunction with?
What? Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to be in conjunction with the process.
Necessarily accessory, but just in conjunction.
With, right.
Okay.
And I think from a security standpoint, it makes sense too. But you're gonna have it all set up for the processing. If you have dispensing there, it's extra secure, you know, you have all the security in one place.
But we're getting into a place where, as we move forward with distribution, medical cannabis, it's gonna be distributed in pharmacies. And we're gonna get to a point, you know, probably in our lifetimes, where it's going to be just in the Martins Pharmacy, distribution of medical cannabis. Not today, you know, not tomorrow, but I mean, that's kind of where we're moving towards. That's just the reality. I, I think in conjunction, you know, where there's facilities already in place makes sense, but I don't want to lose the spirit of why we have I1, I2.
So allow them the C2 and C3 and in conjunction with processing in the I1 and I2.
Or growing.
Growing, yeah.
And growing and processing is only allowed in I1 and I2, is that right?
Yes. I also want to point out what we didn't talk about is...
Say it again.
Say that, it stays that way.
I'm, I'm just asking, I'm just asking. But because of the security and so forth, it almost has to be in those, in those districts anyway. Because it has to be indoors, it has to have, right, it has to have all that stuff. Yeah, I think you're right. Until they allow it outside, that's gonna be anywhere else.
Um, another thing that...
I don't think it should be allowed, by the way.
Another thing that the board did several years ago was require growing, processing and dispensing to be located with, not within 1,000 feet of a school or a site located for, or purchased for that purpose. So that's a further restriction on it, 1,000 feet is, is a lot.
How many of the C1 are C2s and C3s that take it away from? Because my concern when I see stuff like that is that we're allowed in C2 and C3, but if you put this additional restriction on it, it actually takes it out of all of them. Or it takes out a half of, or stuff of that sort. I don't want that to happen.
We could bring that back, because I think it's gonna knock out a whole lot of C2 and C3 properties that are within 1,000 feet of a school.
We, we should not be so restrictive, you know. I, I don't mind best practices, but I don't want to over-regulate how we are putting things in C2, C3, so...
Right, I, I think anywhere a pharmacy is allowed, this should be allowed.
No, that was the, Commissioners did that. And it's actually more restrictive than most of the other. A lot of the other jurisdictions have 500 feet or...
Is this a debate now?
Sure.
Because I don't agree with that.
With which part?
Yeah, I think it should be at whatever distance away from a school and a daycare or whatever. I, I think we just said schools before, didn't we?
Uh, yes.
But it should be restrictive in accordance with what the state is already directing. What's happening is we are being over, above and beyond that. You said, you know, within 500 feet. Now we're saying within 1,000 feet.
So is the state?
No, your current, the, the current code from the Board of Commissioners two years ago says 1,000 feet.
What does the state say?
The state doesn't.
They don't.
That was an additional zoning regulation put on, because that's considered oftentimes a zoning issue. But I did find jurisdictions that had 500 feet, but I also found a couple others that had 1,000.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to leave it to our discretion, but I would suspect, just like everything else in the state, they're gonna soon tell us.
Up to you.
I'd like to know how many C2s and C3s that are marked out of the, out of the field.
Yeah, I, I hate to do, have you do more, but I agree with that, because I'd like to see that. Because I, I fundamentally have a problem with a grower, processor or dispensary very near a school. Or, I'll take it a step further, a childcare facility. I got a problem with that. But again, that's open for debate, but answer that question and then maybe we can...
You brought up a separate issue. You said childcare facility.
Yeah.
Well, I know, I didn't, I know we just said schools, so...
Well, I, well, I guess if you're gonna do analysis, that's, that makes a big difference, whether you're doing just schools or if you're doing schools and childcare.
Well, just do...
I do mean family daycare. So then what will come first, yeah?
See, I know you get family daycare involved in too, I get that. Which typically, well, I guess you could have a family daycare in it.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Daycare is everywhere.
And what will come first, that you can, they would have the dispensaries there and then the daycare comes up by it, right?
They wouldn't have to step back there.
Yeah.
All right, maybe I'll back off of that a little bit, but I do have a problem with near a school. And I think that's what we decided before, right?
Yes.
So just, see what you're...
Well, we said no closer 1,000, and, but also we didn't make it available in C2 or C3. So now we're making available dispensing in C2, C3. Again, I'm, my biggest concern is that we just don't over-regulate the zoning and that we look at best practices and we look at, you know, just having these debates, having this conversation. But I, I, I mean, if I'm gonna recognize it as a legitimate use medical cannabis, which I never thought I would be saying, but if I'm now recognizing it as a legitimate use to be dispensed in C2, C3, then it should be allowed to be dispensed in C2, C3, and we shouldn't over-restrict.
And that's fine, but you know what the next step is now. You know what's coming.
It'll be sold in Martins. It's gonna be on the shelf.
There are snacks on pre- sale.
Yeah, as it becomes, you know, possibly scooted over to recreational use, then you've got these dispensaries that are...
Well, yeah, I don't even want to address recreational use.
But, but if they're there, how are you gonna take them away? Then you got a whole other zoning issue. That's why I'd like to put it in place now. Now, not that that's gonna be next week, but...
I, I know where you're going.
Medical cannabis.
Right, anti-medical. And if you put medical down in the definition of the thing, then it's...
Dispensaries will be there.
Yeah, but it's, but it'll be for medical.
That's the only thing.
So if it comes for recreational, that's a different use.
We have to have another set of regulations.
And we would not allow for those dispensing operations to allow for recreational distribution.
I, I understand that, you're just...
There comes your 1,000 feet and everything else.
Right, I, I get it. I just, you know, at some point, they're probably gonna say, well, the dispensaries that are already in place can do it that way too.
That's why.
So anyway, I don't want to add too much to it. I just want to make sure that there are certain...
Right.
And I agree with you, Commissioner Ross, I don't want to make it so ridiculously, you know, off the charts, but...
We're, we're not. It's, again, it's, it's a challenge because it's culturally different than where we come from.
Okay.
But I just, if we're gonna allow for it to be distributed within C2, C3, then we should allow for it to be distributed, you know, those facilities to be zoned into C2, C3, and we should not over-regulate its, you know, from schools or anything else, but it's hard.
We'll see what that number comes up to.
Okay.
Check that and then come back to us the next time.
Okay. All right, we'll do that. So we'll have that for the 21st. All right, an update on the hospital. Um, we are actually meeting with them this week to tour their facility, kind of at, look at what some of their long-term goals and objectives are. Um, so I don't have anything really to report back, but, I mean, we've had really positive talks with them and we're gonna meet with Marie Spielman and, um, other members of the hospital to walk the site and talk with them about what they're currently doing, what they would like to be doing in the future, and how we can all work together to make sure that they're appropriately zoned and where they need to be and want to be. So that's, that's all I have there. Um, so... So with that, we can pick up on page 49 of the text with regards to bulk requirements. And again, the text that we're working from is the strike-out version, just not the clean copy. So 158-084, commercial industrial bulk requirements. And also, I gave to you in your packet just an idea of what bulk requirements are. So that's, she kind of with the definitions of what is a bulk requirement, the dimension, dimensions relating to the size of...
It's behind the, excuse me, it's the next thing after the medical cannabis.
Thank you. Relating to the size of structures or uses, including the lot area, lot with height and yard requirements. And then this is how we do our bulk requirements in Carroll County. Other jurisdictions may consider things slightly differently, like where building height might be to the, I'm probably getting the term screwed up, not the top of the roof line, but not like the gables, or like, yeah, like, so the architectural detailings are not included in the building height, but the actual roof line or stories, is that a good way to explain it, Tom, or Jay?
I love Jay.
Currently in air code, in zoning code, it says to the height of the highest structure on the roof. In the building code, it's to the medium height of the other roof. So it would be whatever the average between the height of the start of the roof and the height of the top, whatever that average was, that'd be the height of the roof in the building code, which is different than air code.
The height of the highest structure?
In air code, it's the height of the highest part of the roof.
Part of the roof, not the highest structure?
Correct.
So an antenna doesn't count?
Antenna doesn't count. Air conditioners, they have some relief for those type of items, but it's to the highest point of the roof.
But if you had a peak or something like that, that would be, that would be the top.
Correct.
But in the building code, it's the median?
The median of that roof height.
So how do those two reconcile? Got to ask the question.
Yeah.
That, like I say, we look at it differently.
Because you have out of a structure, the median, I think one side could be 20 feet higher than what you're allowing to height of the highest structure.
You don't get...
Because the median is okay, that could be allowed there.
We're not getting into the building code now.
You have to go to BZA, say the building was located five feet off one side and 15 off the other, it doesn't meet the side yard requirements.
Well, if it didn't meet any of those, any of those side yard requirements or setbacks, it would have to go before the BZA, or it could go before myself for a zoning hearing.
Depending on the amount of variance that they needed.
Yeah.
It goes, but, but how's the height thing resolve? Can you add any?
Well, the zoning only applies to, it doesn't cross over into the building code, it's a separate requirement. So the 50 feet for commercial and industrial is, uses the zoning definition. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it usually is a problem.
Is it what?
A problem.
Usually not a problem, and typically in the building code, where it becomes, might be a question is whether or not there's a need for some sort of fire, additional fire requirements. When ours, you know, it's the building height is to the roof of the building. If it does come into a problem, they would just request a variance from Jay as to an additional height of the building. But I can't recall of any situation where there's been an issue that we've ever had to resolve.
I can't think of one.
So does the zoning would trump that, the building?
The zoning will trump it.
Right, okay.
That's correct.
It's a separate issue altogether. Okay. So then we also define what a yard is, an open area on the same lot, the principal buildings, which lie between such buildings, and the lot line, and is open and unoccupied from the ground up. So then we define front yard, rear yard, and side yard, and then there's a little illustration down below. So that way we all know what we're all talking about.
And we did not change those yard definitions, these are out of the existing code. And so that's just so we have a frame of reference when you're looking at what's on page 49 and 50.
The one thing I also understand about front yards, by definition, by our code, a front yard is any yard that it joins a public road. So theoretically, you could have more than one front yard on a property.
Yeah, if you're on a corner or...
You're on a corner, you could have two. I've actually seen some places that have three front yards. I know one house in the county that has four front yards.
Their own little islands, surrounded by road.
So, but that's, like I say, so you can have more than one front yard.
What happens when you tell somebody to meet you in some joint?
You keep wandering around circles.
It usually goes in circles, Commissioner.
And the other thing is, the other thing, it's not, it's not on how the house faces.
Yeah, we don't care how the house faces.
Right.
And believe it or not, that's probably one of the biggest misconceptions, the public house. This is the front of my house, why isn't this the backyard? Legally, it's not.
Just out of curiosity, I'm looking, it doesn't have to be a county road, it just has to be adjacent to...
A public road. Private road does not count.
Private roads don't.
Okay, I was going to ask that.
It says, it specifically says a public road.
White sign road doesn't count.
Correct.
See, they all do fire service stuff, right? Side A, B, C, and D, easy.
So that, yes, and you have one of those white sign, and your houses sit back off of the main thoroughfare, they may face the white sign road, but really the front yard is what's the side of the house faces out from the main thoroughfare.
What if they don't face it? What if they're way back and they don't face the main?
It's part of the property that faces the public road.
Any part of the property, so, okay. Even if they're not literally...
And you say whatever is the, you could have a property like in the middle of nowhere with lots of roads around it somewhere, but whatever road is the closest in that case is what we would use in the front. Or where their entrance comes off, back off, something. It, like I say, it varies like with everything else in zoning.
Okay.
Just like with use in common driveways, we also allow in place to switch the front yard to facing the common, there's a section in place there that allows that.
If we're going to use in common, we will run the front off, if it's a named road, it will be run, because that's typically how you face your houses, and so we will run it parallel to that use in common as it heads up, as if it is acting as a public road.
I'm glad that was settled, I was losing sleep over this.
Yeah, you should, yeah. So I guess starting with, Mary, do you want to start with the front yard, side yard, rear yard, what we changed?
Right, A is for the commercial districts, the three commercial districts, and they're all the same. The front yard is proposed to be 10 feet, side yard 10 feet, rear yard 15 feet, height 50 feet. What I would point out to you is, front yard is currently 40 feet in the BNR and BG, so that's a significant decrease that we assumed you might want to talk about. Our purpose in dropping that to 10 feet was just to provide flexibility in site design and parking to be in the rear if, if that's the best design. There is always the option for the planning commission to approve a site plan and require more, it's just, that gives the utmost flexibility. So that was our thought, and proposing that, the planning commission agreed, but we assumed you may want to talk about it.
Personally, I think that's a good idea.
So why can't it be a combination of all of this? So if you're giving more in the backyard, whatever, and you give less in the front yard, or, I'm kind of confused on what you're asking us to do.
We're asking you to decrease the front yard requirement from a minimum of 40 feet to a minimum of 10 feet to give more flexibility in design.
To give more flexibility in design.
It also creates a builder, bigger building envelope, so you can utilize more of that lot space then, you know, when you have those setbacks there.
But it wouldn't be setback, it would be right on the road.
It would be 10 feet off.
It'd be 10 feet.
That's correct.
As opposed to 40.
Remember, it says minimum.
Right.
Right.
You, as a designer, can do whatever you want, but that was one thought.
Yeah, but you're allowing the desire to be as close to the road.
That's correct.
As possible.
As possible.
We're allowing it, depending on the use of the building, you know, they may desire that it sits further back, or depending on how the entrance is, if you had, you know, a delivery vehicle coming in with truck or trailer, it may not be able to sit that close to the building. However, it was, the idea was, let's let the designer, let's put the hands in the design instead of in the hands of the county to make that requirement.
And if you look at this diagram, it shows it's not necessarily from the street, but from the public right-of-way line. So that's, it's not necessarily, you'd have...
Well, it's not necessarily from the public right-of-way line, it's from the property line. So whatever your front property line is, that's where the 10 feet is measured from.
So if it butts right up to the road, it would be...
If it butts up to the road, it would be the right-of-way line, but if it's a parcel that's behind another parcel, it would butt up to that property.
Are there cases that could be the center of the road?
Pardon?
Are there cases where the property lines to the center of the road?
There are cases of that, but there is a section in the code that covers that.
We don't let you put your house in the road.
No, but you may have the property line used to the center.
No, there's quite a few properties in the county.
Yeah.
I'm going to say a good majority of them in there. This is the definition setback line, a line that is required minimum distance from the street right-of-way line or any other lot line that establishes the area within which the principal structure must be erected or placed. So that's what it's saying. But like I say, for a road, there are distances sometimes where the property lines cross the road, and there is a setback requirement, a minimum of 25 feet for non-collective roads and everything, from the center line of the road to where the building line, structure is measured from. So that is covered.
The intent is, when it was 40 feet, that the parking would be in front of the building between the property would be...
A good number of times, yes, it is.
This is allowing them to use as much of the property as possible for cases that parking would be behind the building or...
Yeah.
Correct.
The other thing we also now allow, or we started allowing several years ago in the code, is shared parking. And so this would allow, maybe increase that opportunity for shared parking, instead of having to put your own parking on your own lot.
This would also not apply to planned business centers or to industrial and business parks. So really, this is more limited than it may seem, because if you look around the commercial development in the county, a lot of it is in the planned business centers.
Yeah.
Like, we had a hard time finding ones that were not.
Yeah, finding examples that were not.
And they have their own separate criteria in the subdivision regulations that we did not recommend any changes to.
So what's an example of this?
Of this here?
Yeah.
It's easy to find examples right on a main street. Did you find any that were?
I had a hard time. C-1 was a little bit easier with the standalone, that's not the planned business center.
Oh, yeah, that's probably pretty close.
It's real close to the road.
That was an old home, wasn't it?
There might be some individuals uses on 26th.
That's a single, that's standalone.
Well, like, so for instance, if you want to look in your example packet, the C-1 example on Old Liberty in Maryland, 2060s are not planned business centers. This is a childcare center on one property and a, the other was an orthodontist on the other. And those are standalone C-1s. The childcare center is 6,100 square feet, and the orthodontist office is 5,600 square feet. And you can see the parking is to the side, they both access off of Old Liberty Road. You can see how there's housing right near there.
Yes.
And these were good example candidates of C-1, where they're not off the main, they sit on a main road, but their access is off a local road. They're near a neighborhood.
Is there a minimal parking requirement for a size house? Because if, if you looked at this and you said, "I can put it within 10 feet at the front, 10 feet aside, 15 feet in the air of the rear, and put all that in, maybe as building as large as I could, I don't know how much room for parking on that lot." So is there, is there parking requirements? There is parking requirements based on the type of use that is going into that facility. We have different park requirements for office, warehouse, medical facilities, whatever the type of use would require that specific number of parking. Again, if we had two uses side by side, quite possibly, they could, you know, split five on one, 10 on another, whereas where you needed seven, you know...
Seven each.
Seven each, and so it allows to take use of multiple properties.
Yeah, so the intent is to give the developer options to have the best used piece of property that they're about to develop on.
That's all it was, was just to give the developers option, not sure they'll be able to make use of, but provides flexibility.
And they have to abide by whatever other...
And the one thing that is also out there is, and we discussed at the meetings, is if you put the building closed, well, what's that going to do with site distance? Well, they still have to address a site distance requirement.
Right.
So that's a separate requirement, that may dictate that the building may not get as close, they have to push it, may need to push it back, but it depends on the type of use.
So this should have a positive impact upon small business economic development?
And we would hope so.
Then I am all in.
Yeah.
Let's not beat this up.
Okay, that was the hope.
Okay, the other change, number four, the height requirement for all the commercial districts would be 50 feet, that's currently the requirement in the BG, but the BNR is 40 feet. I'm not sure what the logic of the BNR being 40 feet was, but 50 feet seemed to be consistent with other business districts in the state. And the same types of uses go there.
Would be six, that's another story.
Well, one of the things we were taking out also in the height requirements is, in some areas, there was a number of stories. You could only have three stories and be 50 foot tall, but we're removing the three-story requirement, so you have that whole 50 feet to play with.
You can make one really tall floor.
I think it's time to start putting high rises in Carroll, so I'm against this.
Well, that would be residential code.
And the hope is to give, again, more flexibility.
Now, that's on record there. Somebody just went, "Oh."
More flexibility in design with the way buildings would look, so that way we could have more, you know, more aesthetic, pleasing buildings.
Going from 40 to 50, so, do we need more hook and ladder?
Well, it's already in the BG.
It's already in the BG, yeah.
We're just talking about the BNR.
Yeah, two, three, and five. Well, four.
If we allow for, if we allow for larger buildings up to five floors, do we have...
We're fine with that.
Okay. We have the resource, we have the...
Yep.
Okay, resource availability.
Okay, number five, where we originally had the bulk requirements for nursing homes, continuing care communities, and assisted living, was referring back to the R-20,000. That's in the current code, but the group of us have met since you got this, and our new recommendation is that those do not have, need to have different bulk requirements than anything else that's in the commercial districts. There's no, as long as they're in the commercial district, we really couldn't see the logic of why the current code requires them to comply with R-20,000 regulations. Certainly if they're in the residential districts, that's a different story, but if they're being built with other commercial buildings, they would be compatible if it's similar regulations. So that's our new recommendation.
So you're just going to take that out?
Yes, that's our recommendation.
We're proposing that to you, yes, we just couldn't get it out.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to remove five.
Number six is, as I think I said before, the additional bulk requirements for planned commercial centers, which are basically shopping centers, are provided in 155-094, and those are the subdivision regulations, and those are current requirements. But if you want more detail, Clay can tell you everything.
You don't find Mary.
Also, the bulk requirements for business parks, which is a use we haven't really gotten to, it's on the very last page, will be established by the planning commission at the time of site plan review, and that is just because if you're having a comprehensive plan, like a business park, it doesn't make sense to try to fit these bulk requirements try to fit these bulk requirements into that.
They're gonna be so individual in nature.
Right, and it's a, it's a comprehensive plan.
Is that what it is now?
That is, except for the business park is a new, something new we've created. But I believe it is for the industrial park. B is the bulk requirements for the industrial districts. Again, we have reduced all of these. Back to the discussion on front yards, minimum 10 feet. That is currently 50 feet. Side yard is currently 30 feet. We're proposing 20. And rear yard is 30. We're proposing 20. The height is the same at 50 feet. The one thing I would say about these yard requirements, if you're concerned, is that we do have the separation requirements that we talked about about a month and a half ago of industrial uses when they are adjacent to residential and institutional uses. So they're definitely covered by 200 to, I believe, 1,000 feet if it's a really onerous use.
So we have that already in place. Why have these setbacks? Why not have them the same setbacks as we have in commercial? With 10, 10, whatever it is.
I think in this case, as I recall, we looked at other codes and found that with the side and rear yards, they were a little bit more for industrial. And I believe that's how we came to it being a little bit more, but I don't think we felt strongly.
But I mean, if the intent is to use, I apologize. If the intent is to use the property to the best that developer could use it, he or she can use it, why make this further restrictive than what we're already saying in commercial? We've already taken those adjustments.
I believe, I'm sorry, I believe in the industrial, and certainly we can confirm this. I believe what happened on the side yard of it being 20 feet, it ended up being, and it might, we have to look at that, but I believe there was a question on the building code because industrial, industrial to industrial, I believe, might have a greater separation.
Because of fire.
And so that was, I think, where we fell down or fell on the side yard. But we certainly can check on that.
But that's already, that would already be in the code. So if you're restricted by the code on where you can put a building next to another building, that's regardless of this, that's, you have to go by that.
Understood, but I think what we were concerned about was that who was the first one in? Could, if there was, could all of a sudden take over a lot, decide on the next property and restrict the amount of property they could use because they were so close to the property line based on a building code? Whereas if it was one developer, then that would be okay. But when dealing with, say, in an industrial park, you were allowing one individual to control potentially the building setback of the next property. And I think that was one of the concerns, and we can follow up.
I would recommend taking a look at that. If that is the case, I understand it. But if the case is to, the intent to allow the developer to use as much of the property as possible for his or her use, you know.
Understood.
I would look at the least restrictive that we have in commercial, so.
So do you want us to go back and investigate what the building code does more, or just we wanna change it or?
Well, I think, recommend that you go back, look at the code.
Okay.
And if. Yeah, if it makes sense to conform with what we have, that we're allowing for commercial distances, that's what I would recommend, so the developer can get the most out of the property they're developing.
Again, we're not changing the recommendation for height, which is 50 feet. Similarly, to the business parks, the bulk requirements for industrial parks shall be established by the planning commission at the time of site plan review. And that section C is just pointing out there's another section that applies to accessory uses. Just wanted to make sure you're reading the code, you know where to go for that. So that's everything we have on bulk requirements.
Questions, can we keep moving forward or? We have six pages left.
It is a fast six.
It's a fast six, like.
He moved.
Okay.
I thought you were gonna talk about signs, I'm okay.
Quick paragraph here about mineral resource overlay. And again, this is just so, in the mineral resource overlay, which is an overlay district, we already have, it's well established, it's for our quarries. Again, just cleaning up the language because we had the IG and IR reference, making it go back and reference the I1 and I2. And then, so that was just a trade out there, which we're gonna have to do and reconcile that throughout the code. Anywhere there's BNR and BG, IR and IG, it'll now reference the new C1, C2, and C3, I1 and I2. So now signs.
Actually, signs is.
Not a lot.
No, sign, the only thing we're doing with the signs here is making them compatible with the subdivision regulations because currently, right. Currently, they are not. Currently, there's some inconsistencies between the two, so this was a way to reconcile the language. And I don't know, does anybody wanna go into more detail about that?
One of the big, I felt one of the big changes in the signs is currently when we determine how many signs you can have on a property, we use the front wall of the building that faces the road. We multiply that length by four, and that gives you the total square foot for all signs on that site. One of the problems we've come into is a lot of these buildings that have long front walls, such as Walmart, 300, 400 foot long. Gives them a lot of signage. In Eldersburg, when they did the, redid the old Walmart, they broke it up into different businesses. And instead of using that whole wall, it's easier, it's more accurate if you take the length of the tenant space of what a tenant is in that part of the building and give that square footage to that tenant. Instead of making it based for the whole site, it's gonna be based on each tenant. It's divided up equally, and I feel more fairly than the way it was.
But overall, it'd be the same.
Overall, it's gonna be the same size and everything. It's just that you're gonna have one tenant, might have 30 foot of front and might have a few small signs. And you might have a tenant such as a marshal's that might be 150 foot long, giving them a larger amount of the size. So each tenant, it's gonna be based on tenants, so no one tenant can take up all the square footage.
How do electronic signs play into this?
In what way?
Size-wise, I mean.
Size-wise, I mean, the content of the sign itself. What we regulate is the size and the height and the location. We don't regulate the content. Electronic signs for businesses are perfectly fine. If that's what you wanna put on your building, that's what you can put. We don't differentiate between that and between an old-fashioned sign.
What you're talking about are signs on the buildings.
Signs that are on the premise, business signs, yes.
Like.
If you're in a shopping center, all the signs in that shopping center are considered on-the-premise signs.
Whether it's on the building or standing out.
Or freestanding.
Okay.
So that's, that covers all those signs. Billboards, there's a whole different section of the code that's covered with them. But that's every sign on that property is covered by that square footage. So if you wanted to have a large building and you wanted to put up a 200 square foot sign, which is the maximum size you can put up, you could. That may use up all your square footage for putting signs on any other part of the building. So it's up to the person how he wants to use the signage.
And that also goes for the freestanding signs?
Freestanding.
So it's all cumulative?
Yes. So if you have a freestanding, and we count on a freestanding, we count both sides of the freestanding sign. Some counties count just the whole size of one size. We counted, both sides are counted.
If you have information on both sides.
Right. Now directional signs like, you know, arrows and stuff like that, that direct you on a property are not counted. But if it's a business sign that has advertisement or logo or something along that line that's telling you what business is there, it is counted.
Okay, so where are we going with this?
Well, that was the only change for really using the premise.
Point out that change, that's all.
Yes.
Any other changes on here?
Is this adequate size what you have here for most businesses?
Yes. For most businesses, it's adequate.
The conversation about the freestanding signs, do all the tenants need to agree on the type of freestanding signs or was it the property manager, is it the developer?
Yeah, whatever developer or property wants to put up for a sign.
Okay.
That's what they have to have put now. In the future, they wanna change it, they would have to go back through the site plan process to have it changed. But during that site plan process, the developer has to provide a sign sheet that.
Go ahead.
Show you the location and layout of all the signs and sizes and everything.
And Commissioner, you know, as part of the site plan review, as part of what planning commission will be, looks at also.
Right, okay.
Is there any discussion on height?
Just currently, the maximum height for any freestanding sign is 30 feet. Now, I know the planning commission has the authority to approve signs at different heights, and I know they have general tendency to want them lower than that. Currently, in the code, that's the maximum height a sign can be.
Okay, there was no discussion about up, down, around, any? I was just curious.
And that height usually comes into play usually with your shopping centers and stuff like that, where you wanna put all the tenant signs on it.
Yeah, most businesses are on ground level, I would think, you know, for the best bang for your buck, I would think, so.
Or height requirements different than the municipality's requirements, says ours is 30, or theirs higher than ours, or? I'm just curious, I don't.
I understand. I don't, from the municipality's standpoint, I have no idea because I don't wanna get confused myself.
All right.
Because there's eight different municipalities and they're all, could all be different. And if somebody has a question in the city, it's, you have to contact the city.
I think the other new thing with signs is the employment campus district. That's all new language. So if you wanna quickly read through that at the bottom of 51. I think the biggest thing there is the prohibition of certain types of signs, flashing or moving signs, exposed neon signs, pennants, banner streamers, tether balloons, inflatables. And again, the reason is to keep this kind of as our more premier employment district, so to set it a little bit apart from the rest.
Because those three things are, those three A, B, and C are allowed other places.
Yes, yes.
So it won't look like a used car lot?
Correct. That's not the look we're going for in that district. So, and you would hope also covenants would help some of that as well, but this was a way just to have, again, that more uniform look, more professional.
But the third one, dealing with the balloons, inflatables, if it's temporary for an event that's happening located on the employment center, you're saying that they're not allowed to use those type of?
No, they have a section in the code that allows temporary use for them for a limited amount of time.
Yep, cool.
See, you're right, page 4.
And again, the 158115 is again just reconciling it with some of the changes, so we're moving from business to commercial, so changing that. And then again, replacing BNR, BG with the C1, C2, C3, IR and IG with I1 and I2.
There's a typo that's throughout.
On the outdoor advertising signs, each message on a sign must be displayed for a minimum of 10 seconds. Is that an industry standard?
That is basically an industry standard. When we wrote the codes that cover the electronic signs for billboards, the industry was involved with those, and we had discussed various things with them, with dimmers and how bright they should be and things of that nature. So they were very involved in writing that part of the code.
Yeah, this is what's close. And just so you know, that underscoring between the F and the T is because if you go to the code right now, it says often seconds.
Yeah, we're fixing.
Just little things.
Minimum of often seconds.
Okay.
The next few sections are the same. They're just correcting or changing BNR to commercial and to the IR and the IG to I1 and I2. For solar, we are just adding the employment campus in and changing the BNR and BG to C1, C2, and C3. But I don't believe we're making any changes to, to the regulations themselves and then renumbering those. At the bottom of 53, 158154, adult entertainment, this is identical to the section of the code that's currently there. It's relocated. We have not changed any of the regulations for that. Those have been in place, I think, when I looked into it for about 15 years.
Just to go back to solar for a second. On the roof of any, any commercial industrial building, we're allowed solar, according to what we got.
Right.
158155, junk salvage and recycling, that's the same as the previous section. It's just a relocation from a different section of the code that needed to be done when we rewrote this whole thing. Industrial park, 158156 is a new section that applies. I'll read part of it. It's meant to apply to both the I1 and I2, and it's currently really what's the business park in the code. But we're calling it industrial park. And it's a self-contained development that's cohesive with a common development scheme generally developed as a standalone entity. It allows all the uses in the underlying zone or in the zone, the I1 and I2. The difference here is that additional uses permitted may include uses permitted by right in the C3 district, provided that no individual use may exceed 10,000 square feet and collectively comprise no more than 20,000, I'm sorry, 20% of the entire park. So that's a way to get a mixture of commercial and industrial. You'd be able then to get restaurants and some limited retail into the I1 and I2.
I have to go back to the, I'm sorry, but the adult entertainment C and determining compliance with the city requirements. Where it says measurements shall be made in a straight line without regard to intervening objects from the closest point of the structure containing adult to the basically property line, license from property line to property line.
Did you recall that?
I don't recall why they did it that way. I mean, that was done quite a few years ago.
So that's kinda confusing. I mean, I mean, not confusing, but it just seems to be, I would think it would be from property line to property line or from structure to structure. But if you're taking from the structure of one to the property line of the other, it doesn't make sense.
I'm not necessarily disagreeing with that. I think the intent might have been at that time with the structure could, could have been, like I say, all the way on one side of the large lie. And there'd be a big gap between the structure's corner or a building and that side property line.
Yeah, but then where do you think that?
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
But then if you take the line from the other building over to there, then you get a more favorable distance, if you know what I mean. Depends on what side you measure from. So I'm just saying it should be from, in my opinion, property line to property line.
And that's usually how it's done. This is pretty unique, the way this is written in the code.
Like you say, why they did it that way.
Okay.
Just before my time.
Any thoughts?
Do you wanna make?
Clay?
I have their problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you wanna change that?
We all agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Change it.
Change that then.
Just in case we have any adult.
We don't really have, I mean, this isn't, you don't even have an issue, right?
But even if it was.
Thanks for clarifying it.
So back to the industrial park. The following uses are permitted by right without being subject to the limitations, meaning the 20% or the 10,000 square feet. Trade school, professional training center, conference center, and hotel. Multiple non-industrial accessory uses may be permitted, provided that no single use shall exceed 5,000 square feet, except a daycare center or health club, which can be 6,000 square feet, which is current language in the code regarding accessory uses. And provided that in aggregate, the non-industrial accessory uses do not exceed 10% of the entire industrial park. So you could have 10% being non-industrial. So you could have 10% being non-industrial accessory uses, you could have 20% being C3 uses, basically 70% of your industrial park should still be industrial uses, and that was the intent of this, to make sure that it stays industrial in nature, if it's in the I1 and I2, but to allow some flexibility in the industrial.
Like all that language, makes it more marketable for the dollar.
We're hoping for. Above petroleum storage, again, as we said last time, we didn't change this because this was just litigated by the past board of commissioners, so we just left that language as is. Self-storage, we had a lot of discussion on.
But we didn't really change much. It has been brought to our attention by the gentleman sitting behind me, that we should on number three, where we say so is not to adversely affect property values, that's unnecessary subjective language that we should be taking out.
That's true.
That was in the, that's in the current code. There's also been a question on number one, maximum storage unit height shall be 15 feet, that we're referring to the individual storage units or the building itself, so that's probably up for your discussion whether or not. If, it's unclear what it says, and if you don't specify, you don't know which one it means. A lot of the newer self-storage units are.
Self-storage units are multi-story buildings with individual units in it. That sentence, maximum storage type units shall be 15 feet, you could interpret that to be, the unit itself can be 15 feet, but you can still meet the maximum height of 50 feet for the overall building height, you could interpret it that way.
That's why I would interpret it.
Then again, there could be someone else.
You're allowing 50 feet, right? So why would we make it different than that?
You're just saying to make it more clear, so that it's not.
Yeah.
That would be the only thing, to make it more clear.
Why don't you just take it out, because you already have a restriction of 50 feet on the building.
And I know most of the self-storage units I've ever seen, the actual unit themselves aren't usually 15 feet tall.
If you would take it out, you could open yourself up to a huge.
A 50-foot building, that you're allowing to see three.
You would just allow for large storage?
Like I say, if you kept the individual 15-foot unit, you would be allowing basically a three-story building, because you'd be at 45 feet for three stories.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the overall, I would only be concerned about the individual unit itself. Would you want an individual unit to be 50 feet high?
Well, I guess that's up to the person who builds it, and if you want to use, I don't know what you want to store in there, but if I had to use for it.
Okay, just asking.
If the overall building was, if you're talking about a single storage building 50-foot tall, that's more of a warehouse than a self-storage unit.
Yeah, right.
So that would fall more probably under that definition of a warehouse than it's a self-storage unit.
But if you had part of that building used for storage or warehouse, wasted space otherwise, right?
I mean, I know most people probably wouldn't want to store things up to 15 feet, for one, getting up to it and taking it down.
Right.
Could be a hazard, I mean, to me.
How high's Random House?
Random House?
This is different, this is like the self-storage, yeah, mini-story, not like distribution.
Okay, we'll look at the, I mean, I don't know how high they go, forklifts ever how high they go up?
Random House had to get a variance, 70?
I think they are at 70 feet for the one building.
I'm thinking it's 70.
BJ's, how high do they go up?
BJ, they're under there, as far as I know, they're under the height limit.
Yeah, but this is, this is.
This is mini-story.
This is individual storage.
I mean, my suggestion would be leave it in there, but add the word individual, maximum individual storage unit height shall be 15 feet.
Similar to number two, should be similar.
Actually, I was gonna ask about number two. The only reason I could say you're gonna limit it to 500 is because you don't want it to be a warehouse, but other than that.
That's, 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 once you start getting into those larger sizes, you're looking at it more as a warehouse than as a self-storage for an individual.
And we're allowing them in the C2 and C3, so you probably wouldn't want the warehouse to be in the C2.
Makes sense.
So maximum individual unit heights, is that what we agreed to, or is it good to position it then?
Yeah, I think that just says, makes it clear, as far as.
Everything else under this self-storage facility is current language in the code, it's just in a different spot. So the last change is business park, and this is considered, we thought of it as a mirror image of the industrial park, it's allowed in the C3, it's intended to be primarily commercial, but it does, because it's cohesive with a common development scheme, you could have uses permitted by right in the I1 district, up to 20% of your entire business park, again, similar to what we did with the industrial park. Multifamily dwellings may also be permitted, and this was something we wanted to draw to your attention, because the planning commission did talk about this, but felt this was a good idea, that in a business park, you could have multifamily dwellings collectively not more than 20% of the total area of the business park.
You mean like apartments or properties?
So similar to what we talked, right, we talked about doing that in the employment campus, it's a similar kind of idea.
20% of the business park development, is that clear enough, do you mean actually the building structures, or do you mean the land?
The land.
It'd be land, because you're, yeah, yeah.
Is that, I just, that's clear enough, that's not going to be a?
I'll take the word development off of there then, 20% of the business park, because that would be clear, it's 20% of the land. Yeah, I guess, I'll say that, if the question is, is that clear enough, I would question if it is clear enough. If we're already saying is that clear enough?
If you're asking, yeah, it's not.
Then I would say it's not.
We should change it then.
What should we say, land area of the business?
Yeah. It's pretty clear. And we'll come back and take another look at it.
Total area of the, total land area.
Is there a? Everything.
Everything, I still think that's unclear, sorry.
Because what we're limit, what we're, what we're comparing is the number of, you know, when it says multifamily units, comparing units to area.
Right.
And it's tough comparing, that's a tough comparison.
Yeah, so you could, I think sometime in the future, someone could argue that you mean the development area, not the total land mass, so, if you mean land, make it land would be my suggestion, so total land area or total property area, whatever you, whatever's consistent with the way we say that kind of thing elsewhere, would be my recommendation, but I honestly don't get a vote here, so.
This is the last page, do we celebrate or anything?
There's champagne waiting.
It should be clear that we're talking about the land and not.
Yeah, I'm putting that change to land area, I'm taking notes for all the stuff we have to come back for.
Okay.
We won't get to see you guys as much anymore?
No, oh, no, no, no.
We're gonna have separation anxiety.
Step one.
So, you reviewed everything, congratulations.
You're not testing us, are you?
No, you made it, step one. We'll go back and address these outstanding issues, have a clean copy of everything and where it ended up, so where we are now. We still have a few more things to do, so on the 21st, so we have planning commission next Tuesday, as you all are, I know aware, you sent back the IR district for a text amendment for breweries, we brought that forward to planning commission last Wednesday evening, so they could give a recommendation, they meet on Tuesday next week, there's time on their agenda, and they will be ready to have a recommendation, unless something should dramatically change in their thought process, they were agreeable to what was presented before them, thought it makes sense, so they're going to have a positive recommendation, I believe, with what was presented to them, and they'll have a decision on Tuesday of next week. So, that being said, we're coming before you on Thursday of next week, right before this next work session, to request to go to a public hearing regarding that. The reason it's important for this, and before we can finish this up, is we're going to need to now go back and reconcile our commercial and industrial with the recommendation that's coming from planning commission, because it is different, we had some restrictions, that was, restrictions were recommended when the packet sent up, those restrictions are being lessened to some extent, if it continues to move in that direction, so we'll have to reconcile that next week, so that way, the two texts match that, the IR isn't different than what we're proposing as far as the I1 district and the commercial as well. Then, on the 26th, would be the time that we're meeting after that, I think just maybe one more review of the text, if there's any other outstanding issues that need to be addressed, and then we have laid out procedures for text adoption and consideration of some public outreach meetings. The idea of the public outreach meetings prior to a public hearing is, we'd like to send out letters to all the landowners that have been identified, which are on this map in this phase, sending them an individual letter, and then making sure that they're aware of any public outreach meetings that are coming up, so that way, we don't hear, they wouldn't hear about this until they have been notified, they'll have an opportunity before a public hearing to bring up any issues, so that way, before we go to the public hearing, unless there's something that's coming out of the woodwork, anything major would have been addressed, and you always have to account for, there will always be something that we have not heard of that will come out at that time, but we're doing our best to try to avoid any of those major types of issues coming up at the last minute. So, that's pretty much where we are, and really not a lot left to do, I think, just a few more meetings of this work group.
I appreciate the hard work, I appreciate all the work that you and the team is doing. I like the maps, you know, picture a lot of times worth a thousand words, I appreciate the intent that you're making it interactive, continue to work on the color schemes that we discussed early on.
I know.
But they really do help a lot, to visualize where properties are, how they're, you know, zoned, and, you know, yeah, it's, it's, it's good work.
We didn't go over it today, and it's not a big deal, but we just kind of put down, like, what does C1 would look like, what does, what is 37,000 square feet, of that booth, you know, that sort of thing, what does 11,000 square feet look like, what's a planned business center, what's a total shopping center? So I did put some examples of what the C1, C2 districts would look like, just so you kind of know, in your head, what is this, what order of magnitude we're talking about, so we didn't talk about it, but they're in your packet for you to review if you're interested.
You said you notify all property owners?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep.
Just the property owners, that's the only people notified?
Yes, yes, the ones that are going to be affected by any future rezoning, I haven't shared this with you yet, but we've been working to, we have a letter, and then, so each property, we'll get a letter, and I don't have the map with me, but there'll be a map of their individual property on the back, so they can see what they are. And we have this interactive as well, ready to go, so as soon as you all are comfortable things, we'll be ready to launch everything, and we can go over, and I can present to you all the stuff that we have done, so that you're comfortable with what will be presented.
We're like schoolchildren, we're like prom.
Yeah. So it's good, that's, you know, it's good to have something tangible.
Yeah, it allows you to correlate and relate to it. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think that's all staff has for you to, if you have any other questions for us.
Good.
I was gonna bring up one more thing.
Yeah, please do.
I got, I have to.
See, I could tell, I could see the wheel.
I take a digress, but I want to go back to the business park here, one, one thing that I just want to bring up is that while it allows the multifamily dwelling units and all, there's nothing in here that says that, like, you can't go in and do all the multifamily at the beginning and then not do the business park, or delay the business park process, so, I just want to bring that up, because I think that is something that from the development review side and from the actual implementation side, we could see happen, you know, reality is. So it's just something for you to make sure you've considered when you, when you're looking at this, when you add in, our current business park, I think it only allows second story, and it has to be approved by the planning commission, right, so it doesn't allow this outright, the multifamily dwelling units to be placed in it, it's just something to consider, it can happen, I mean.
Well, can you write something to the code to avoid that from happening?
We have something now in the business park definition that you can only construct?
No, that's in the planned business center.
I thought.
It's not a business park, it's a planned business center, the second floor of a, of a PB, planned business center, a business park is something brand new, so we don't have, we don't have that.
Well, but I think also, maybe what you're referring to is that restriction of how many permits you can pull in a year for, when, it was a facility.
That's not, that's not, I guess the question could be, you know, if we did the multifamily, you know, similar to, you know, the, the most recent model was in the Elder'sburg, the Sykesville area of Warfield.
Right.
That's the most recent model that we have, where the residential aspect of it has occurred, we're antici, we have, we don't know what will be coming in next, but we do know they're started on the residential side.
So, in the business park definition today, we have, you can, like?
We don't have a business.
This is, no. Do you have an industrial park?
No. In today's code?
We don't have a business.
Are you talking about what's the proposed?
When you can build commercial and industrial, only to, so you don't build out your commercial first, or build out your residential first, and don't come back and do the rest of it?
This is a brand, business park.
Yeah, yeah.
That's planned business center.
That's planned business center.
That's not a business park.
Right.
Business parks, business parks, subject to a minimum of 10 acres retail, and.
That's retail and commercial, that's a renovation and retail. Yeah, that's where the planned business center, right, that's all we have, right there, all we have is a planned business center where you can do the second floor of the house, I mean, the second floor of the building.
She's talking about, she's talking about industrial.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm just talking about phasing, it says, development of retail or commercial space shall be phased in with the development of the industrial, uses such the ratio of retail and commercial to industrial may not exceed 25%.
So you could put that same kind of language in the business park?
Okay.
Residential.
So, so we minimize the risk of building houses or townhomes and not finishing a business park?
Yes, I think there's that, and also, I think from a community's perspective, when you have a business park, they kind of expect businesses to be there too, so if you go in with all your residential first, there may be some consternation with the public about, you know, what you're actually allowing in this, in that area.
Yes, put some phasing in language in there.
Phasing or ratio, okay.
With a certain percentage of the, of the commercial.
Yep, we will have that for next time then. And then our next meeting is next Thursday, which is a little bit different than our Tuesday, so.
I like to compliment Mr. Devil Dus on his choice of shirt and tie combination.
Purely my wife, 100%.
She has all the taste in the family.
Thank you, Coach.
All right, anything else? If not, safe travels, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.